So we've had a bunch of issues with CRT and the mask mandates and kids and I mean the whole COVID shit show. I wanted to show so there've been, you know, trying to get the Department of Justice to call, you know, concerned parents, domestic terrorists. And I mean, it's just outrageous. So I wanted you guys just to see some of what these concerned parents have to say. This is from, I believe, Virginia Beach Schools. I mean, this is what type of infectious disease is really spreading across the country. So just take a listen to what these parents are saying about CRT and mask mandates, you know, civil liberties, civil rights. You know, you've got, you know, veterans, teachers, people of the community. I mean, some of the things that I'm hearing these concerned parents say is extremely disturbing. So check it out. Drop your comments below. Don't forget to hit that like and subscribe button. Let's check it out.
Too late. So they went back to work school on Thursday. On Friday, my son apparently had a potential close contact with somebody. So on Monday, I was informed at four o'clock in the afternoon when Brandon gets out that my son had this potential close contact and was to quarantine again for 10 days. Yesterday was the end of that day and he went back to school today. So he has been home this whole time except for six days during last week when he was quarantined. The staff-
I'm gonna back this up because I'm just gonna go to the beginning. As you can see, this was a school board meeting September 28th, 21. Listen to some of the things that the school board is trying to do. It's not just in this place, but we gotta make sure this kind of stuff, you know, we can't let the school board bully the parents. So, you know, it's, we should just be able to vote them out of, out of office. But when you hear comments and concerned parents saying these things, I think that we need to step back. Everyone needs to step back and take a real look at what, you know, the fundamental basis is for a good foundation. Why we all came here? Why, how we got here and where we're going? Let's take a listen.
I would have to say it's my opinion that the school board is again violating bylaws now with the September board meeting. The minutes of that meeting do not, in my opinion, accurately reflect what happened that night, falsely covering up the existence of the September 13th PRC meeting and the, and the follow-on activity regarding voting. So I wonder if some of these things that we're voting on tonight are even legal. Tonight's agenda contains 66 pages of single-spaced writing on how to control public access and speech-
Now see, these parents are calling these board members out left and right. I've never in my life seen anything like this. I'm pretty sure parents are just gonna, I mean, I just had a little girl, I'm not gonna send my, my daughter to public school if this is what it looks like. I can tell you that right now.
...of the public. These documents, not even written by school board members, rather by city and school employees, reflect the indifferent leadership of the PRC leader to the responsibility she has to know the details, intent, and consequences of the policy and bylaws she is responsible to send to the board to be voted on tonight. She had not even seen the agenda two hours before the meeting took place because it had not been sent to her. Mrs. Riggs, my mind is blown with that. Last school board meeting, there was finally talk about how to deal with the crowd of people outside who wait to speak as the general public becomes more aware of how we are treated. Text messages and overflow rooms were discussed, but I have one idea, as Dr. Spence said in a video this summer, that everyone should have a seat at the table. So rather than talking about us and maneuvering against the public, why not sit with us, work with us, and ask us what actually would work for us and make us comfortable? Instead, we will witness tonight government infringement by the Virginia Beach School Board led by Ms. Ryan, Ms. Melnick upon the First Amendment rights of citizens to speak, assemble, and petition their government. Just as in the last few months, we have seen a web of lies against the public to justify this infringement. And you all can roll your eyes, but it's true. Technically, one can argue truly that the school board is not required to take public comments, but the Virginia Beach School Board policy has always been to allow comments. Thus, actions tonight designed to silence and control the public as a response to dissent violates the spirit of the First Amendment. And spare the excuse that moving from four to three minutes is minor as compared with your ability to suspend Roberts rules, cut off individuals and speakers at a whim, interrupt timing and not granting it back, regulate public assembly without defining regulations, introduce and vote on policies and bylaws within the same meeting, it is most certainly not minor. To justify infringement, school board members falsely claim we outsiders are an angry mob, taunting, threatening, laying hands on, harassing, spewing hate, and forcing school employees to run gauntlets, also harassing those whose opinions differ from ours. Some claim meeting attendees make fun of children, and these are all lies and school board members know it. They ignore their own lack of decorum. And by the way, thanks for the eye roll last time I spoke, Ms. Ryan. Recently, Dr. Spence and Ms. Lanetti presented a real, true rationale for-
I mean, this is, I mean, this is fucked up that these, this, these parents are calling these board members out. Like, this is when there is no accountability. What makes these people think that they know what's better for, you know, these taxpayers and this community's children than their own parents?
...for permitting rallies, insurance, and planning. So long as permits are not abused, yet the board still denigrates the public. Are rallies endured time waiting to speak or taped? Tapes have been released to the school board members to show how peaceful we are, including a tape of an opposition speaker-
And calling them domestic terrorists?
...who opposed our peaceful rally and then came in here accusing us of expressing hatred. These truthful tapes are dismissed by multiple members of the school board with the tired phrase of perception is reality. No, reality is reality.
Yeah.
And as school board members, it is your responsibility to act upon truth. I for you at all complaints and investigations of threats and violence of harassment made against speakers and rally attendees. How many threats of harassment touching and gauntlets of speakers and rally attendees were there? None. Neither have we ever broken a law. We are legally petitioning our government. We understand employees don't like to go through crowds. And we understand that Ms. Melnick at last meeting said the meeting before on the seventh, she was, she was told by members who were of the employees that they are touched by people. So I want to ask, first of all, the meeting didn't occur as according to your calendar, but also why have Ms. Melnick, Ms. Ryan, Dr. Spence-
And that is time.
-not demanded an investigation? Because those things didn't happen.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Sandra Frazier, then Thomas Conant, and then-
I mean, I mean, it just blows my mind, not even so much as a thank you as a concerned parent, we heard your voice. I'm just mind-blown that these bitches are such bitches on these panels. I mean, didn't address a single thing that she said. And so I guess it's really just time to listen, but hopefully somebody will say something because what I'm hearing is some, some deeply disturbing things.
Amendment one to the Bill of Rights, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. In case you would like a copy of the Constitution, I'd be happy to get you one. No problem. So these items that you're going to be voting on, banning of the American flag, since when is the American flag a danger?
I mean, holy fuck, banning the American flag? They've gotta be out of their fucking minds.
On American soil? I don't think it is. And I, in fact, I know it isn't. My son just retired from the Army, very proud American. I won't go there. Anyway.
Yeah.
An inability to speak at meetings per the whim of the school board? Uh-uh. You work for us. We don't work for you. We are not your servants. We don't have to bow down to you to get permission to speak. We show up and we get to speak. Speaking time decreased if allowed to speak. You want to take it from four to three. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it can be. As we've just seen with the speaker before us, even though she had four minutes, she wasn't able to complete it. So decreasing that by another minute is an abomination and there is no excuse for it. You work for us. We are not your servants.
Damn right.
Yeah. Okay. Shutting down rallies. Okay, I don't know, maybe you're confused, maybe you think this was the storming of the Capitol, but we have not stormed this building. We have not harassed anybody. We have not touched anybody. We have not thrown anything at anybody. So again, don't go there. You're not allowed. You work for us. We are not your servants. And the school board will now be able to vote and for policy changes and amendments at the same meeting in which it is first presented. So that doesn't give us, the people that you work for, an opportunity to hear these changes and decide if we are in agreement with those changes. I remind you.
What kind of bullshit socialist, I mean, that's not even socialist, that's straight communism.
You work for us. We are not your servants. You are here to protect our children and you don't need to protect them from the parents.
Yeah, no shit.
The school superintendent, not the school board, will determine how speakers may sign up. Again, you are the school board. You work for us. I don't know how much clearer I can say it. You work for us. We are not your servants. You don't work for any organization outside of Virginia Beach. The parents and the students, you are to look out for their welfare. And I could cover a whole bunch of other things, but it's not on the agenda, so I'll save that for another time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Conant.
No acknowledgement, what? No acknowledgement whatsoever. That's just holy fucking shit balls. Fuck these people. They should all get recalled.
Amy Palumbo and then Tara Chang.
These are everyday parents, just-
Ma'am Conant.
Welcome.
I thank God that I can be here tonight to praise Him and to freely express my opposition to bylaw changes that aim to greatly diminish and take away that freedom. One board member told me that she and others feel threatened by those who disagree with recent policy decisions. She alleged that I made a verbal threat when no such threat was ever made. We are told that public gatherings strike fear into some who serve here, yet there has not been one credible charge made against any who simply want the truth to be told. Can you not tell the difference between passion for truth and hatred of individuals? What are you afraid of? British philosopher John Stuart Mill said, "It is not falsehood that causes the greatest offense, but truth." You can endure insults and abuse when you know them to be false, but if the remarks that offend you are true, their truth becomes a dagger in the soul. You cry lies and you know that you must silence the one who utters them. God in His word embody truth, so we must pursue truth as central to our existence. If truth offends, it is because sin in mankind makes the Bible's righteous claims seem harsh and intolerable. Since Adam's fall, human thinking is marred by sin and our ability to rightly use power is corrupted. The freedom for citizens to name and confront what they believe to be wrong, to debate issues, and to speak truth to power is an essential offset to human depravity and an indispensable tool in the pursuit of truth and justice. This public forum is essential to principled governance of our schools and must never be limited as proposed by these unacceptable bylaw changes. The First Amendment reads in part, "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech or the right of the people peaceably to assemble." Ben Franklin said, "Whoever would overthrow the liberty of a nation must begin by subduing the freeness of speech. When this is taken away, tyranny is erected on its ruins." Thomas Jefferson said, "I am against all violations of the Constitution to silence by force and not by reason the complaints or criticisms, just or unjust, of our citizens against the conduct of their agents." Prophets in the Bible called the evils of those in political, called out the evils of those in political and priestly office. Scripture gives principles which undergird the importance of free speech and a free press. The desire to limit or prevent speech and lawful assembly makes me wonder if this board is seeking to exercise power without accountability. The purpose of the First and Second Amendments is to limit the power of government and hold it accountable to the people. British philosopher Sir Roger Scranton wrote, "When the totalitarian movements of the 20th century began their wars and genocides, the universities, the schools, were first among their targets. Those movements which made the 20th century the bloodiest in history gained their power by eliminating the rights of our first two amendments that are enshrined in our most basic law. The reason the rights to speak and bear arms come before all others is that without these rights, every other right can easily be taken away. Rights are not given nor taken away by government, but come from God, and the school board has no basis for restricting these rights. The truth of the gospel that all have sinned and are ultimately accountable to God offends many because they don't want to hear that they might be wrong. Is this board afraid to hear opposing views? Because in your hearts, you really know that many of the policies you have enacted are harmful to children and antithetical to education. And when confronted by the truth, your conscience is perverted.
Thirty seconds.
Or is it that you only want to keep your power and use it as you see fit without any opposition? I urge you to reject any bylaw that changes and limits and restricts our freedom to speak and freedom to assemble and keep this forum open, transparent, and welcoming to the public comment like you say when you walk in."
Why is there always some douchebag wearing those fucking slacks and a pair of Nike fucking running shoes?
Our next speaker is Amy Palumbo, then Tara Chang, then Amber Thompson.
Thank you. It's interesting. I come in here every, every week that I speak and I have notes and something happens when I'm walking in. So I'm talking about today limiting parent's speech. So I'm walking in and I see Dorothy Holtz, the biggest proponent of masks, walking through the hallways without a mask. What's going on here? You make all these speakers stand outside with masks on. Come in here with masks on. Make our kids sit in class with masks on and she's walking in the hall. Seriously? What is going on?
Yeah.
I try to be calm when I'm here, but you know what? I care about kids, that's all. Most of these kids aren't even mine. All of them aren't mine. My kid's grown. So I come in here to talk about limiting our speech. Why are you limiting us? Why are you making up lies about us? Especially you, Kim Melnick. Let me play a video from last week where you state that we are threatening.
Man, boy, they're calling them out.
...on social media. It is in emails and down my ways here. And as we could see tonight, we have angry people here. Let's say this one, but they're angry. And the perception from our hundreds of employees who have believed at the same time that this has already started is not fair to them because they are being targeted as they walk out. They are being targeted and they're, people are talking to them and laying hands on them and saying things to them.
Laying hands on them, that's where I'm gonna stop. You are a liar. That is defamation of character and you should be sued. You should be. And roll your eyes and blink. There's not been one, not one complaint. And if we're such a threat, why are all the police officers in here? Please tell me. Please. I know you can't speak to me, but please. I'm tired of you lying about us because we are the truth and you don't like the truth. And so you're trying to shut us down. And you know what? I'm raising my voice right now, but I listened to you guys raise your voice last week at one o'clock in the morning or midnight. So you are a liar. A liar. And you're running for office and whoever is watching, you're trying to just shut us down and it's not gonna work. Because you know what? You may shut us out of here, but we've got the whole world out there and they're listening to us.
That's right.
And they know what you guys are doing.
Coming to you from Kansas City, Missouri, baby.
Um, let me see, what else do I have? It all happened, all of this happened when we started exposing you guys. I think it's funny. All in the, all for kids.
I'm gonna stop that for just a second because I have to agree with her and obviously I agree with all the parents so far with every single thing that they've said. But I do think it's funny that this woke tyrannical bullshit is finally coming to a head. And maybe it was the COVID that they thought they were gonna use to actually control everybody, but parents ain't having it. And so maybe, you know, because of COVID, we actually, you know, the parents are, you know, re-establishing their boundaries when it comes to their children and the government.
So now you want to reserve the right to not hear us, cut us off when you don't want the truth coming out. You want to shut down rallies or make us get a permit? Go ahead. We don't care. We'll stand on the corner. We bought a bullhorn today. We got a bullhorn, we've got a voice, and we've got social media. In case you haven't heard, we started a recall petition for six of you tonight. A lot of people out there tonight signing stuff and we're gonna get all the signatures. And you may laugh and think the petition will not work.
I gotta stop it. Why, why is there this fucking us and them between the school board and these fucking parents? I mean, obviously, the parents are drawing a hard fucking line here and, you know, Biden has caused so much division. I've never seen more division caused by one individual in my entire life.
But it's gonna work because parents are fed up. Don't forget, this is the people's house. And I'm looking right at you, all of you. You are shutting the parents of the kids that are in school.
Thirty seconds.
You're hypocrites. You're not wearing masks. Eight days after the vote, you know, you just want to silence us because we called you out. Eight days after you voted to mask our kids, you were at a wedding. 200 people, no masks. We got pictures. You don't like that. You maybe have to shut us out in here, but guess what? You are not. The more you do this, the more we're gonna, we're gonna fight back and we have so many parents. I get a million messages a day. How do we help with the recall? How do we help? So you know what? Keep it up. You're not gonna shut us up. You could try all you want in here.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Tara Chang, Amber Thompson, and then Dan Chang.
My remarks address bylaws 147 and 130 with, which you are walking towards strict public speech and gathering banning of cloth emblems which had been listed as flags in your policy review committee and suspend Roberts rules. Let me list you a few names. Lieutenant Bradley A. Foster, Lieutenant Paul R. Fridley, resident of Annandale, Virginia. Naval Air Crewman, helicopter second class James P. Boyack, resident of-
I mean, listen to this. I mean, the fact that she's having to drop, you know, veterans' names. You know, they're trying to ban the flags? The American flag? I don't fucking think so. Nobody's gonna think so.
Salem, Virginia. Hospital Coleman, second class S.A.F. Barnes. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Hospital Coleman, third class Bailey J. Tucker. Marine Corps Staff Sergeant Darin T. Hoover, Marine Corps Sergeant Joanna Rosario Picardo, Marine Corps Sergeant Nicole Guy, last pictured holding an Afghan baby girl caps'd, "I love my job." Marine Corps Corporal Hunter Lopez, Corporal Dagan W. Page, Corporal Humberto A. Sanchez, Lance Corporal David L. Espinoza, Lance Corporal David Jared M. Smith.
Yeah, that's a big fucking deal, banning the, any kind of flag which would include the American flag. I mean, just think, I mean, obviously, this is a no fucking brainer. The fact that anybody would have to think about all the lives lost in the name of freedom. I mean, it's just atrocious.
Lance Corporal Wiley J. McCollum, his beautiful baby girl, Levi Riley Rose McCollum, was born September 13th, 2021. She will never know her father. Lance Corporal Dylan O'Morola, Lance Corporal Keem Nukui, Navy Hospitalman Maxton Soviak, Army Staff Sergeant Ryan C. Nos. His last message to his mother was, "I'm all good here. I love you." These are the names of the 13 fallen heroes killed in Kabul and the fallen five who died in the Navy helicopter crash. Two are Virginians. The deaths you, you two are dishonoring by infringing on the God-given rights of Virginia Beach parents and citizens, the rights they fought and died for. The First Amendment right is God-given. As elected officials, you work for the people of Virginia. Most importantly, as elected school board members, you work for Virginia Beach parents. All the parents. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Amber Thompson, then Dan Chang.
Man, that was pretty heated. Now, I'm not gonna cover all of these, but god dang.
Then Amy Soleris.
I mean, this is jacked.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a Virginia Beach mom of two boys, a one-year-old and a five-year-old.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sorry. Just starting our public school system. I'm here to speak to you on multiple issues today, most importantly around hearing of public comments at school-
Now I want to say something. I saw this earlier and I like what this particular individual has to say. And so I just want everybody to understand, these are the people that these school boards are calling domestic terrorists.
...board meetings. I'd like to refer back to your mission statement. Put students first, seek growth, be open to change, do great work together, value differences. By continuing to push parents out, who are you doing great work together with? Because it's absolutely not those to your left and your right. You guys do not work together. Some of your members spend more time on social media arguing with parents and other constituents than fostering relationships with your fellow members and the very parents of the children you took an oath to support. By limiting our time to speak from four minutes to three minutes, that tells me you either don't want to hear what I have to say or you simply just don't care and would rather go home. This board is allowed all the time in the world to speak once public comments have been heard. Why not allow us, parents, keep the small amount of time we have been allowed previously? Yes, these meetings may go longer than others at times depending on what the chair and vice chair allow on the agenda, but again, it is your duty to listen. You all are public servants and have a responsibility to hear concerns, especially when it involves our children. I understand we may disagree on certain topics, but censoring the opposing viewpoint will never allow for growth. Just like your own internal dialogue provides you with logic and reasoning, the same can be said for open dialogue with others. This requires all participants to have equal standing and that we listen with respect and empathy. How can you expect that of parents when you don't provide the same grace? Another issue I have is that you are looking to limit our freedom of speech by voting to not allow rallies outside the parking lot prior to meetings. From where I'm sitting, you already are looking to limit our time to speak. You've limited how many people can sit inside for meetings, in turn pushing us to wait outside. And now you want to limit parents, grandparents, and other concerned citizens from gathering in the parking lot where you forced us out to in the first place. I've attended a few of these rallies and they've been nothing short of peaceful. They start with prayer, they play the National Anthem, the Pledge of Allegiance, and then go over issues they planned to speak about that evening. Would these rallies truly be an issue if they weren't in opposition to your stance on the very issues these gatherings were created for in the first place? This all goes back to that open communication I mentioned previously. You have continued to push parents away and make us feel unheard. You shut us out of meetings just as we are shut out of our children's schools. That growth you seek in your mission statement will not come from the judgment you treat us with. Listening deeper than you have before and treating this as a partnership it should be is what will allow for progress and what is best for all involved, especially our children. Lastly, quite a few of these issues, as well as others, fall back on the superintendent deciding matters, such as determining how speakers address the school board. The same superintendent that I believe is in violation of Title 22.1-66 and the same superintendent that has gone completely outside of his elected authority addressing city council regarding a fiscal policy issue on behalf of the entire board, I might add. I have lost all trust and faith in our superintendent due to the above-mentioned issues as well as his lack of presence in these meetings when it mattered most. The superintendent is not an elected official. He was appointed by the majority of you all and has shown he does not represent his parents and constituents. He is there simply to make suggestions. In closing, I'm asking you to just partner with me. I do my due diligence emailing-
Thirty seconds.
-any concerns and showing up and addressing you appropriately at these meetings. All I ask is that you have an open mind and don't just vote as if you are trying to fall in line with what you, excuse me, don't just vote as if you are trying to fall in line with what you believe the majority wants. Vote with what you truly believe and know is right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, then Amy Soleris, then Christopher Hollinger. Welcome.
Man, I could play these all day. I mean, these, I'm gonna post a link to these. I might play one more, but you guys gotta check this out. This is just, I mean, there's, I don't, I don't even know if there's any end to it, but just remember, you know, you don't want to be another sheep like everybody else. You gotta be a wolf. You gotta think like a wolf if you're gonna catch the sheep.
Hello, Ms. Ryan. I'm speaking tonight on the items 12B, 1 through 17 as regard to parental rights and transparency for citizens and parents in the Virginia Beach, in Virginia Beach.
See, the thing I want to say real quick, and that's what these parents are pointing out, is, you know, these are just totally, you know, stomping, these school boards are just trying to stomp on the, the parents, and, you know, people get this, this little taste of control. What is the deal with everybody trying to control everybody so much? I mean, you're not gonna do it with parents, you're not gonna do it with children through their parents. So why in the fuck do they think that they can just be all shady and try to slide things in and, you know, make rules that don't allow the parents' input or suggestions, don't allow the parents to assembly? You know, parents are unhappy, address the issues, but they don't want to. They think that they know what's best for the children, not the parents, and that's, that's why it's a total fail.
These parents entrusted their children's education and support of parental values, personal growth with you and the Virginia Beach City Public Schools through you, Dr. Spence. As I address, as I address item twelve B. through one through seventeen, the plans to restrict our First Amendment rights were what Ms. Franklin described to me, rights being stripped. I will, I will discuss the VBCS CPS regulations, which are centered around Policy five dash seven, which were approved on fourteenth September school board meeting, because it exemplifies what happens when you limit our transparency and ability to petition our government and speech. The public last saw the changes to these regulations at a twenty-four August school board meeting. At the fourteenth September school board meeting-
I can't take anymore of this. My heart just goes out to these parents and, you know, I've, I've got a twenty-month-old, so, you know, I, we tried, I just don't trust the COVID, I don't trust really other people. I kinda do feel more safer just huddling and hiding out in my, my little igloo and, and keeping our, you know, everybody safe at home. The way it's looking with this kind of shit with the public school system, you know, if I don't have a say in my daughter's education or what's being taught, there's no way that I would participate in that sort of curriculum or that type of education or development for my daughter. So I'm gonna put a link to this in, in the description. Be sure and hit that like and subscribe button for me if you like videos like this, and don't forget to ring the bell for notifications for the YouTube algorithms pushes these videos out to other viewers like yourself. I'm John Lee, I'm on to the next one.